Are you ready to go? Derek, you ready?
Welcome to the Hampden Town Council meeting for Monday, June 22nd, 27th, 2016. This time, could you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda tonight is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as is?
I move adoption of the consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, all those opposed? Thank you. The next item up is public comments. This time, if anybody in the public would like to speak about anything that is not on the agenda tonight, this is your opportunity. Do I have any public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item. There's no news presentations and awards. Next item under public hearings is the proposed FY 2017 municipal budget, including the sewer budget and capital improvement program. This is referred to public hearing by the town council. At this time, I'll have the town manager Angus Jennings will do a display and an overview of the budget, and then we'll have public comments. Thank you.
Thanks very much, and it'll take just a moment for this to catch up with us. Okay, so I haven't put a lot of bells and whistles in this. I wanted to provide basically an overview of what's before you and how we got to this point. So the, what I'll review for the next few minutes is the budget process to date, some of the longer-term budget and financial trends that we're working within, and then break down some of what you have before you in the proposed budget, both on the expense side, revenue projections, sewer budget, and the capital program. So the process to date, back in February, the town manager and council had two goal-setting sessions on February 6th and 20th. Those differed a bit from prior year's format in that it was broken out into two sessions and had significant participation from department heads. In March, the department heads proposed their department's budgets presented to me, and then I put that into an overall budget with some revisions to what was proposed and brought that to the council on May 2nd, along with a budget message. In May, the council held a series of budget working meetings on each of the proposed departments or groups of departments, and two weeks ago, the council referred the budget to public hearing. There are some changes from prior years. One of the most notable is that this budget before you includes review of the sewer budget and the proposed capital program. Both of these items are required in the town charter to be part of the annual budgeting process. The sewer rates, as you know, were increased in February, and because of those rate increases, the sewer fund is projected to be self-supporting in FY 17. This will be a big plus from prior years. In FY 15, the sewer relied on inter-fund transfers from the general fund of more than The proposed budget does not include revenues from the unassigned fund balance. This is because the year-end balance has fallen below recommended levels for the last two fiscal years. So this is a significant gap in the revenue side. The current year's budget relies on $300,000 of unassigned fund balance. Two years ago, it was half a million, and that was about the level it was for the prior five years before that. So that's, on the revenue side, a little bit of a shock to the system, but certainly, you know, that's something that we need to do. Also, the expenses in this budget include some items that were previously paid from the host community benefit account. Some of those are smaller dollar amount items like holiday lighting, but that also includes a bond payment which has been paid out of host community benefit for the last several years. So I think it's a, you know, it's a realistic budget in terms of the actual expenses that we face. Some of the major changes that were considered or proposed within the budget process. At the direction of the council and the services committee, the recreation department worked to prepare two alternate budgets, looking at both operational and financial impacts with and without the ski-in center. After a thorough review process, which I think personally I feel was very healthy, the budget that is before you tonight does propose to continue the lease of the ski-in center. The second significant change is the change in proposed staffing in the planning and economic development arena, including improved administrative support to public works and finance. And finally, the capital program has a five-year time horizon for infrastructure and capital items. Now, people reviewing this need to understand that years two to five are non-binding on spending. It's the FY 17 spending that is in the budget. However, the charter requires a five-year capital program, and the idea, of course, is to inform near-term decisions based on longer-term priorities and for items that can't be paid for in a single year, to be planning ahead and setting aside money in reserve so that we're not caught unexpected when we need a new ambulance or fire truck, for instance. Some of the factors affecting FY 17 costs, we've included budgeting for a 5% increase in healthcare costs. That's based on estimates we've received of 10% increase, but because the health insurance rates go into effect on January 1st, that 10% increase will only affect the second half of the fiscal year. We have locked in reduced pricing for heating oil, propane, and diesel, but unfortunately, electricity costs in the current year's budget in, across the board, have exceeded estimates, so the proposed budgeting is more in line with what we expect for electricity, which somewhat offsets the anticipated savings on oil and propane and diesel. There were increases on the school and county by a combined 202,000 roughly. Some changes in state policy that will affect residents. The municipal revenue sharing, which we started the budget process expecting would fall, actually did increase slightly from $348,000 to $377,000 in FY 17. This is still down substantially from just a couple of years ago when it was $600,000, and it was as high as $800,000 a couple of years prior to that, but still, I, you know, I think we consider ourselves fortunate that the revenue sharing did not fall this year. The change to the Homestead Act will increase the exemption from $10,000 to a $15,000 exemption, which will benefit homeowners who participate in that program. That change is expected to cost the town about $70,000 compared to this year. The proposed allocation of costs supported by the property tax, and what I mean by that is the municipal costs are offset by the non-property tax revenues. So the municipal share of the tax-supported budget is just under 40% in the budget that's before you. The RSU share is about 53.5%, and the county share is 6.7%. In addition to the property tax, the other revenue sources, including excise tax, revenue sharing, sewer income, the main drug enforcement agency, et cetera, are projected to generate just short of $3.1 million in FY 17. This graphic shows the breakdown by department within the proposed budget, and you can see that, no real surprises here, that the largest share in the arena of public works, police, fire, non-department utilities is the, you know, primarily the water hydrant rental. The reserves, the percentage on reserves is up to 6%. That's a bit up. That's up from 5% in the current year's budget. So the overall budget does include a proposed increase on the municipal side of $706,959, which is a significant proposed increase. That's driven primarily by non-personnel increases. Really what's going on here is the town budget has been basically level for seven consecutive years in real dollars. The town-side budget has not changed, and as a result of that, there are a number of aspects of our infrastructure that have not gotten the investment they need. So our public works director has taken a close look at that, and so there's a significant non-personnel proposed cost increase. On the personnel side, if you isolate that, we're looking at about a 3% increase, and that's inclusive of wages, health insurance, retirement, dental, life, all of that. So that 3% is pulled up by the 5% increase in healthcare. The schools' increase was 178, 289. The county was an increase of about $24,000, with an overall increase of $909,251. Now, if you look at new valuations within the community, this is not final, but every, literally every day that goes by, we get closer to final, and right now, the assessor has estimated valuation increases of about just over $7.25 million. At the current mill rate, that would generate about $127.5 per year. So I know she had the memo in the packet two weeks ago that set out the relationship between valuation and revenues and demonstrated just how much new valuation is needed to generate revenues. So some of the line items with the largest increase, the RSU was at the top, resurfacing roads is proposed to increase by $160,000, stormwater management increasing by about $110,000, as is that bond issue, which again is internal to the budget, which had been paid out of host community. The TIF reimbursement, as proposed, would go up about $99,500. The recreation reserve is proposed at $80,000 increase, and the ambulance reserve is a little bit over $77,000, although that takes into account budget adjustment of $47,000 from FY 14, so. So the estimated mill rate impact, the mill rate will not be established until the tax commitment, which will be at the August 15th meeting of the council. Based on the known valuations, the proposed budget would result in an increase in the mill rate. At the current mill budget, a mill rate of 18.5, so a dollar increase, would cover the cost, but it would leave an overlay at just under $15,000, which is really well below what would be healthy or recommended in any way because of the contingencies that that needs to cover. For an overlay closer to the FY 16 level, which was $303,000, the mill rate would need to be in the neighborhood of 18.9. Now, that would be a shock to the system. So we've taken a look at some additional potential revenue options, and I've identified two options that would, you'd still have an increase, but would reduce the increase to a dollar in a mill rate of 18.5. One would be to reduce the amount of funds sheltered under TIF, and the second would be to project an increase in environmental trust revenues to offset budgeted expense items. So I have one slide in each of these to go into a little bit more detail. So on the TIF side, in the current account balance, there's just under $89,000 of revenue today from the FY 16 TIF revenues that came in that were not sent back to the property taxpayers through credit enhancement agreements. So this is the net amount to the community, and this has not been spent, and it has not been encumbered in any way. The eligible uses, as you know, are primarily defined by the Ameri-TIF agreement. It includes a range of economic development uses. The proposed FY 17 budget includes credit enhancement agreement payments of just under $150,000. Those are obligated, those are locked in based on agreements that were signed. However, another $138.5 is eligible to be sheltered for TIF purposes and would be added to that current balance of 88.9. So the budget before you shelters all of that $138,570. Now onto the environmental trust. The environmental trust was established in the early 1990s related to the landfill. The assets on the principal side are about $2.9 million, and on the income, about $1.1 million, so just over $4 million total. The income-eligible expenses are, can be used to preserve and protect the environment in Hampden, including funding such environmental study, testing, protection, preservation, and remediation measures as the individual trustees in their discretion direct. And as you know, the trustees, any motion they bring forward for funding also has to be approved by this council. So in my opinion, the stormwater infrastructure costs in the proposed budget, which is just about $123,000, would be eligible expenses under the environmental trust. Of course, that's subject to approval of a trust which is not yet seated. So if you look at the budget as proposed, if $138,570 of TIF revenue is not in fact sheltered but is put back into the budget as revenue, that 18.5 mill rate would generate an overlay of just over $159,000, so much healthier. Now, if the TIF revenues were not sheltered and an additional $100,000 of environmental trust revenue was added, which would offset budgeted expenses for stormwater infrastructure, the 18.5 mill rate would generate an overlay of $259,000. And so to give a sense of what, what does a dollar increase in the mill rate mean to the average homeowner? For a home at 120, and for a home with a homestead exemption at $125,000 value, their annual tax bill would increase by about $22.50. For a $175,000 value would increase by $72.50. Home at $250,000 value, tax bill would increase by about $148, and a home at a $300,000 value would increase by about $198. That's, again, with the homestead exemption. So in conclusion, the proposed FY 17 budget internalizes some costs that have been paid in the past with one-time revenues. FY 17 will be the first year in many years that the sewer fund is in fact self-supporting, and in fact, will start paying back the inter-fund transfers to the general fund. And the proposed cost increases do include personnel-related costs but are overwhelmingly driven by capital and infrastructure costs.
Okay. Thank you. And with that, we'll open it up for public comments. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak? If you would, Tom, come up and hit the button for the green light.
Tom Brand, 262 Western Avenue, Hampden. Just one suggestion, rather than unshelter the TIF money, why not use, apply the TIF money to permitted expenses, such as defraying part of the cost of planning and assessment and part of the cost of economic development? And then you wouldn't lose the benefit of the unsheltering the money. The money would still remain sheltered but spent on a permitted expense.
Any other public comments? Okay. So before us, we have the proposed budget. Do I have a motion to accept the budget?
I move that we accept the budget.
Second.
Open for discussion. Councilor Marble?
Just a couple of questions. Please clarify for me and everybody what the homestead exemption exactly is and isn't, is one.
So under the homestead exemption, homeowners who participate, and it's got to be their primary residence in order to be eligible, the way the assessor views their property in the current year, they view it as $10,000 less than what the actual assessed value. So if the assessor looks at the property and says it's $150,000 value, if they participate in the homestead, they're taxed on the basis of $140,000 property. Now, in FY 17, because of state law changes, that will increase to $15,000, so that same $150,000 assessed value would be taxed at $135,000.
So to just be sure, it's more about being a primary residence than it is based on income or age?
Correct. It's nothing to do with income and age.
And to follow up on Mr. Brand's comment, if we unsheltered that TIF, and I don't know if you've had a chance to figure this out, but what would be the negative financial consequence in terms of municipal revenue sharing?
It would be, it would exceed the capacity, not just of this building, but just, so to actually figure it out to a precise level, basically because the town's obligations on the one side with the school and the county, and its benefits on the other side with municipal revenue sharing are partly a function of what's happening in the school with the other three towns and their valuations, with the county, what's happening with all of the other towns in the county, and with state, what's happening statewide. There's so many moving parts that getting to a precise calculation would be completely beyond anything that's practical. We've been given estimates, that was before my time, but I understand, you know, consultants have provided estimates of what the benefit of sheltering is. I do not have an opinion as to the soundness of those estimates. I don't know if our assessor will comment to that, but the, if those revenues are not sheltered, it would change how we are seen in terms of our share of responsibility for RSU, not next year, but a couple of years out. Is that correct? Because they go by a three-year average, so there would be a loss there.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I guess since I made the motion to approve it, it does not, the motion that I made includes the budget without the TIF and without the, without the...
Trust?
Trust. I'm assuming...
Without the trust or with, maybe?
Yeah. You put up what could be brought down, okay? Those two items, and I'd like those two items to be included in my motion, if there was any misunderstanding of that.
Would you like to restate your motion?
Okay, I'd be glad to. I would move that we accept the budget to include the unassigned TIFs and to include a value, should I put a dollar value on that? Yes, I believe, $100,000 from the trust to go towards stormwater. And I believe, now that's been first, second, I believe that that would now bring us down to a mill rate of about one with a $200 and something thousand dollar overlay?
That's right. And again, as everyone knows, the mill rate will be set in August, but this, based on the best information we have, that's exactly correct, yes.
I think we got a motion and a second on the first one. I think we have to vote on that first.
Restate my motion.
Or can we get by with the rest?
I think he was trying to clarify. I mean, it would, pleasure of the council.
Councilor McAvoy?
I just want to make sure what we're voting on here. So we're voting to accept or with the anticipation of getting $100,000 from the trust and unsheltering X amount of dollars from the TIF. Thank you.
Yes, as was presented by the town manager.
Councilor Wild?
Can we actually make a motion on that, the way you put it, with the $100,000 coming from the board or the environmental trust when the board isn't formed yet? Are we that certain that that money's coming?
There is some risk involved, and I'll just, let me just explain this in full detail. So the environmental trust, as you know, was set up a long time ago. The last meeting minutes that we have in the office are 2009, so it has not been active since that time. We have met with the, we've reviewed the trust documents in great detail. We've met with the institutional trustee at Bangor Savings Bank to make sure that we're clear both on the eligible purposes and the procedure to allocate funds, and I'm very comfortable that the stormwater infrastructure would be an eligible expense. Now, process-wise, here's what would need to happen in order for that to become real money that's available to the town. The trust would need to be up and running. Now, how does that happen? It's a three-member trust. One member is appointed by the mayor, one member is appointed by Casella, and the third member is appointed by the two trustees together. So I've been in touch with Casella for months, and in the last couple of weeks, they have, they do have a name of someone they would like to appoint. Now, the trust documents require that it be appointed by the CEO, so what they're doing is, I spoke with them again today, and they've got their general counsel putting together a memo. So we will have a trustee from Casella, I hope, this week, but it won't be long. And I know Mayor Ryder's given a lot of thought, and when the time comes, he will have a name. And I think in his head, he probably does. So the trust will be up and running. I think it's, I'm comfortable it'll be probably in July, certainly no later than the end of the summer. So then you have an active trust. They would need to recommend the use of, and we already are carrying $20,000 of revenue, so what we're talking about is going from 20 to 120. In order for this proposal to be sound, they would need to allocate $120,000 of funding to purposes that are identified in the expense budget, specifically stormwater culverts and things like that. So if they do that, and if this council essentially ratifies that, then that is a very, that money is there. I feel that that is a very high probability that that would turn out that way. Is it 100%? No. So is there some amount of risk? Yes, but it's, it's an option I think we need to consider.
Part two, on the TIF, on unsheltering that, can we make that, or do we have to make that a separate motion or a different vote at any time in the future, or how does that work?
You don't have to. You, you could, you could make a motion to take it out of the motion that's currently on the floor. You could act tonight with both, within the same motion.
I just want to make sure that we're going forward and there's not a lot of speed bumps on the next few meetings, so. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Councilor Marble?
Yeah, and for the record, I'm pretty comfortable realizing I'm not as smart as I'd like to think I am. About the TIF and Mr. Brand's point, and all of the history we've all had discussing it, which is not unanimous by the way, I'm not speaking for anyone but myself, I guess I don't understand why as a strategy, we wouldn't leave it sheltered for the benefits around school cost burden, for example, and apply it to expenses of the has yet to be hired new planner with economic development responsibilities, some of the town manager's time, some of the support staff's time, and probably some other expenses around surveys or market studies or trainings that would all be around economic development. So I guess I'm confused why we wouldn't use that as a strategy.
You could do that. I have looked at the expense budget. In order for it to be a cost savings to the taxpayer, it would... In order for it to be a cost savings to the taxpayer, it would have to be used for purposes that are specifically budgeted in the expense budget. So, on the, you know, things like property surveys and things, there's not, we're not caring a lot for that, certainly not anything that's economic development oriented, as opposed to, say, a better understanding of this site and the pool, that's not going to be an eligible expense. So, really, the only eligible expenses in the current expense budget that I see would be a proportional share of different personnel time, and there's, the real reason that I haven't worked that up in more detail, I think there's some risk there, and when you're dealing with people's wages, that's, you know, unless we actually had that vote, you're creating some risk that you get to month 10 and you can't pay that person anymore, for example. It also gets into, you know, what share of whose time is a legitimate TIF expense, and I don't know that we, where we're at a fairly dynamic stage of the organization, and people's responsibilities are going to change in '17 relative to '16, I haven't felt comfortable saying X percent of my time or X percent of the planner's time. And even if you did that, I don't think, you wouldn't get to the 138,000. I just don't think there's that amount of eligible expense in the...
Well, then, as a follow-up question, and maybe not for this coming fiscal year, but the one after, it could be proportional, correct?
Yeah, definitely. It definitely could.
We could reduce the amount of shelter and expend some portion of that amount.
Yes, yeah, and it could be integrated, you know, into the budget process where that's, you know, we had that conversation, we can, we will again next spring.
Any other questions?
My last question. With these reductions, meaning the TIF going back in to the general fund and the $100,000 coming from the environmental trust, what would be the dollar figure of the budget increase this year?
A dollar, right?
If that's not too difficult to thumb through?
The expense budget increase would not change. What would change would be the revenue side would be, there'd be increased revenue, which reduces what you have to raise from taxation.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Any other questions? So, we have a motion and a second on the revised motion. Everybody all set on that? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. The next item tonight is under unfinished business, reauthorization of the town manager to execute the joint agreement with the municipal review committee, referral from infrastructure. Councilor Marvel?
Yeah, I'll try to set this up accurately, and then I'm going to turn it over to the town manager to bring us up more currently, due through correspondence I literally just saw this afternoon. But for public knowledge, the council has not taken their eye off this whole MRC fiberite process for a long time. Recently, some of us were concerned about what was going on with the decisions made by other towns that were affecting projected levels of MSW for the plant that would then possibly affect the wording in the joint agreement that the council had, in fact, unanimously authorized back in March, was it? It was a while ago.
February.
February. And so, we brought it up again at last week's infrastructure committee meeting, and the town manager has, since that meeting, launched some pretty challenging and clear questions, I think, to the MRC, protecting the town's interests. So, if you would, I'd just like you to bring all of us up to speed with where we are tonight.
Sure. So, the council had voted unanimously to authorize me to sign the joint agreement. The deadline that was set by MRC was June 30th, and so, because I knew there would be more known in June than there was in February, just out of an abundance of caution, I wanted to keep my ear to the ground and make sure we, there wasn't new information that came to light that changed the council's recommendation. So, following the conversation we had last week, I took some of what we had discussed. Some of these questions that you had before you had gone to the MRC before that meeting, some have been since. In a nutshell, I've been very pleased with the depth and specificity of their responses. They've clearly taken the questions very seriously, but also, it's fairly clear to me, this is not the first time they've been asked. I didn't think they were. They've been out, you know, in the region for months. But just to review for the public some of the questions that we had, because obviously we are tracking the project very closely, we wanted confirmation that the $70 tip fee that they have advertised, that they still can offer that based on how things have played out. They've confirmed that that is still what they're offering. We asked about the reserve funds, which they have proposed as part of the deal, really for many different purposes, but at the end of the day, to insulate risk in the event things don't go how they project. And they had been using total capitalized reserve accounts of about 25 million, so we asked, based on the commitments they've received, how has that affected their ability to capitalize those reserve accounts? And it's down, they think it's going to be between 14 and 15 and a half million, but they have confirmed that they are on target to cover the contingencies for which the reserves were established. We had asked about the transport costs in the event there was bypass, in the event the facility didn't open on the timeline, and there were transportation costs to cart things down in Norridge Walk. The way the language was written, that cost could be borne by the municipality or by fiberite out of these reserve funds. And one of the reasons for an excused delay, which would shift that burden to the municipality, was if there were permitting delays. So, my question to them was whether the permitting process, as it's played out, would constitute excused delays, in which case Hamden would bear these costs. They've advised that while their margin for wiggle room is shrinking, they do report that they're on schedule, and they do not foresee the need to use the Norridge Walk option. We asked about the eventuality of, you know, financing wasn't closed for some reason until after January 1st, 2020. That would, MRC could at that point cancel the agreement, which would also cancel Hamden's agreement, so we wouldn't be in a 15-year agreement with a nonexisting facility. We asked about the reference in the joint agreement to the 150,000-ton threshold, and the joint agreement would be trumped by the master waste supply agreement. They did acknowledge in a conference call last week that if they had it do over again, they wouldn't have put that number into the joint agreement in the first place, because they did acknowledge that that is, you know, on paper discrepancy. However, the setup, if you look at the joint agreement, the setup to that language is, and this is really a lawyer talking, it's not a binding number the way it's written in there. It's an illustrative number in the context of the overall agreement, and the agreement is subservient to the master waste supply agreement. And they did share with us, which is in the packet, draft revisions to the master waste supply agreement, because they do, in fact, you know, that number will change, and that change will carry through to the joint agreement regardless of the words in that joint agreement. So, I feel better about that one. We talked about, this was actually, was a significant concern in terms of what tonnage we would be comfortable committing. There was the question that was raised about commercial MSW that doesn't pass through the transfer station, and what is the town's legal authority to dictate where that goes? And on the basis of quite a lot of case law, this gets into U.S. Supreme Court and interstate commerce and so forth, you can't preclude someone from going out of state, but as a practical matter, that's not an option. Where Hamden would have a actual financial stake in the facility, it appears that we would be on very solid ground enforcing our solid waste flow control ordinance, which authorizes the licensing of haulers to where we can actually, you know, say where they bring the waste. So, that was new information that was helpful. And then I did feel, you know, the need to bring to their attention the discussions that have been had on a very preliminary basis in terms of potential changes to how we manage MSW, and they were appreciative of that information. There was a question about are we locked into a contract with Norridge Walk? The answer there is no. The contract is with the MRC. And I asked, is there a scenario where the infrastructure is built, but fiberite does not build the facility, and they've said that's very unlikely, and that they have security from fiberite to hedge their risk against that eventuality, which, there is some risk there, but I felt more comfortable it's not the town's risk, which was a very important point. And so, I think that pretty well sums it up. And bottom line, just as you said, we, you know, had kept our ear to the ground, we wanted to ask some questions just to make sure that we are, you know, that the vote that was taken in February is still the will of the council, and obviously, that's to the council to say, but I felt much more comfortable after these series of exchanges and conference call. And it's not that I was uncomfortable, I just, there were questions that I had that I felt needed to be answered.
Thank you. Any further questions? Any public comment? So, do I have a show of hands to reassure?
Affirm.
Affirm.
Appreciate it very much, thanks.
So, the next item on the agenda tonight is new business. Item A is a notice of the 2015 assistance to the firefighters' grant and a request for authorization to use $818 from the matching grant reserve account for turnout gear, extractor, and dryer. That was discussed earlier in the finance committee, and I'll have the chair of finance, Councilor Seroyce, explain that.
So, as discussed, again, it's the purchase of a turnout gear, extractor, and dryer for the fire department. We took a vote on that and was unanimous to forward to council.
Good.
So, I'd like to make a motion that we accept, that we move forward with the assistance of the firefighters' grant and request authorization for the use of $818.
Any public comment? Discussion? Council McAvoy?
Shouldn't you include the $1,800 is coming from the matching grant reserve in the motion?
From the matching grant reserve account.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Next item under new business is a request authorization to use up to $9,051 from the municipal building reserve for fuel bid under buy. That was also discussed tonight in finance. Councilor Seroyce?
And I think the mayor's covered everything. Again, it's utilize the $9,051 from the building reserve fund for fuel under municipal...
I think it's, I think it's coming under the operating budget for fuel budget for public works.
There we go. Thank you.
So, do I have a, you going to make that a motion?
I make that a motion?
Does it need to be a motion?
Doesn't? Oh, no, it's coming under an operating budget, sorry. Next item then is request authorization to use up $17,000 from the personnel reserve fund for unbudgeted personnel expenses. Again, that was in finance tonight. Chair of finance, Councilor Seroyce?
As discussed, $17,000 from personal reserve fund is used for both, for two situations, one of them being severance, the second one being the additional cost for coverage in the, for office staff. And it was voted again in administration and unanimously approved. So, I make a motion that we author, again, we authorize the use of $17,000 from the personal reserve fund for unbudgeted personnel expenses.
Second. Public comments? Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. The next item is an authorization to engage the firm of Eaton Peabody as bond counsel and to initiate process to authorize FY '17 borrowing up to $2 million in the tax anticipation note. Again, that was brought up in finance. Councilor Seroyce?
As everyone knows, or should know, we last year went ahead and authorized the use of tax anticipation note for up to $2,000 to cover the difference or the peaks and valleys as it pertains to tax, incoming tax revenue, and that has to be done on an annual basis. So, again, we're moving forward, engaging the firm of Eaton Peabody to give us counsel in doing so. So, I'd like to make a motion that we engage the firm of Eaton Peabody as a bound consultant initiating the process for authorization of FY '17, up to $2 million in tax anticipation note.
Second. Public comment? Seeing none? Discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? The next item is the authorization to engage the firm of James W. Weldman CPA for FY '16 year-end audit and FY '17 audit services. That was, again, discussed earlier in finance. Councilor Seroyce?
As stated, we're going to continue with the use of the James A. Weld, James W. Weldman CPA firm. They've been, the firm that we've been using up to recently, and we're going to continue that relationship through FY '16 and FY '17. I'd like to make a motion to, again, engage the firm of James W. Weldman CPA for FY '16 through FY '17 for audit services.
Second. Any public comments? Discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. The next item on the agenda was a request to authorize up to $2,500 from the host community benefit account or to otherwise fund insurance coverage for the 2016 Children's Day activities. That was discussed in finance, and we had a lot of discussion on that. We're going to review some options that we discussed in that meeting, and that'll be moved off till the next council meeting, which is July 7th, correct?
5th.
5th. I got it, July, right? So, at that time, we'll have more information, and we can make a decision on where we need to go for insurance for Children's Day. So, the next item would be committee reports. Services committee, Council McAvoy?
We haven't met since the last town council meeting, so I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Infrastructure committee, Council Marvel?
Yeah, we met on May 23rd, and one of the items, as you heard, was continuing review of the joint agreement with MRC. We also continued to look at and consider LED streetlight proposals. We have work to do on that, both in terms of identifying funding, as well as ensuring that the outfit that has come forward with a proposal is one we want to work with. Potential recommendation of TIF funds for lighting infrastructure, I think that will be forwarded. As was alluded to in the town manager's report to you about the MRC and the joint agreement, we are, in fact, based on citizen input and council suggestions, looking at possible changes to the way we operate the transfer station. It was recently recommended, and I think decided, and I appreciate the resident input on this, that this will be a public process that will be a deliberate one, starting after Labor Day, to review both the compartmented costs of operating that transfer station, as well as options for any possible changes. But that will be done transparently through a dialogue. We had a citizen request for public works, work at the end of a driveway. We heard the results of how we did as a town on MS4 stormwater management audit conducted by the main DEP, and I'm not going to get every name right, so I'm just going to say a lot of credit to staff, because we ended up faring very well on that. We had to take a quiz ourselves on our knowledge of stormwater, and I'm very glad to see that neither Kyle nor anyone else is here waving results in front of us, to my knowledge. And I think that was about it.
Thank you. The next committee would be planning and development. Council McPike? Council McPike?
Planning and development met on June 15th. The updates were the MRC fiberite permitting status that we discussed as to where we were on that. We also discussed the town planner hiring process that is currently going on, and town planner is, the applications are open. There are individuals already being interviewed for that. Marina Road signage, we talked about again, and we will be talking about it some more, as near as I can tell. Environmental trust process for the appointment, you heard that tonight, that there'll be three, one appointed by the mayor, one from Casella, and then those two will pick a third. And then the last item we discussed was the town TIF policy, of which we got a copy of, and the effect of that, and where we stand on that with the business park development agreement.
Thank you. The next department is finance. Councilor Saroyes?
Most of the items we just talked about in new business during the council meeting tonight, with the exception of the rain garden, which was a riveting discussion led by our fine mayor, and what we could do to improve the view of that in the front of the town office. So the decision has been made to make it as part of our lawn and make it as easy as possible for Public Works to address and maintain.
Thank you. The next item up is the manager's report. Manager Jennings?
I'd just like to thank both the council, department heads, staff, and the public for what I think has been a very healthy budget process. It's not been simple, and it's, I'm sure it's just like any budget, there's things that get done and things that don't get done. But I think that the council, at the end of the day, has supported a budget that I think is an honest budget, and it's, I think, going to be very good for the community. And, you know, I hope that a year from now, we can bring things down. Right now, we are kind of playing catch-up on the infrastructure, but anyhow, I think it's been a very good process. I also would like to thank both the council and staff for just the tremendous amount of support that I've received in the last month or so during the period of time that my dad's been ill, and I want to report to people that he's, he's doing very well now. And not only that, we've actually moved him up to Hamden. He's, just in the last nine days, moved into the manor house over at Avalon Village, so that's been a very positive outcome for my family, and I really appreciate the support.
Thank you. The next item tonight is councilor comments. Councilor Saroyes?
I would just like to say, as it pertains to the budget, it was a very long and drawn-out process, but one that was, I don't think we, we left a rock unturned or a line not looked at. It is hard to see the budget going up like it is. It's not easy for any of us to vote for a budget increase like that, but, you know, one of the things we talked about, we were able to maintain a flat budget for the past six, seven, eight years. As a result, when you do that, things don't get done, and we've come to that time of reckoning, or that point of reckoning. There are infrastructure issues, there are equipment, there are a lot of things that need to be dealt with, and it has come to a head all at once. So I think that's a lesson to us as council, and lessons to the folks, the residents of Hamden, that we really need to look year over year, making those improvements that are needed, spending the money that is needed, so we don't run into a situation like we're running into this year, where it happens all at once. So I want to, like the town manager has said, and all the department heads, it was, you know, even though the turnout wasn't what we wanted to see, I probably have more faith in this budget than any other one that we've ever looked at, and I want to thank everyone for their efforts.
Thank you. Council McPike?
Yeah, I'd just like to express gratitude for the effort that the town manager put into this under trying times, and a lot of effort to go in, particularly to satisfy seven of us up here. Took a lot of work and effort, and a highly commendable job, and I'd like to thank him very much.
Thank you. Council Wild?
Pretty much the same thing. I want to thank everybody that was involved in the process, especially the public that gave their input and suggestions also. Long process, but moving forward, it's going to be a much financially healthy town, so very good job.
Thank you. Council Marvel?
It's already been said. Thank you.
Council Comier?
No comment.
Council McAvoy?
Just want to remind everybody to shop local and buy American. Good night, Hamden.
Thank you. I guess I just want to add to the comments by some of the other councillors, it has been a long procedure. We have not agreed on everything at all at times, but we've worked through it as a group. I think that says a lot for the council that we have in place. We can have healthy discussions and agree to disagree, but bottom line is, I think we're all working towards making Hamden the great town that it is. I want to thank the town manager, obviously, put in a lot of time. It's been a challenge for him this year, and I think he's done an excellent job. But I also want to thank the department heads, they've been put to the task to cut costs, get it down as low as they can, and still keep things operating. So it's pretty much been a joint effort by everybody in town, and once again, I've said it before, we have a great bunch of people that work for this town. I think sometimes they don't get the appreciation they deserve, but I would like to publicly thank them for everything they do do. They have the best interest for the town of Hamden at heart, and I think it is showed over this past budget process. And with that, that's the end of my comments. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.